Meeting to order of the Ashburnham Board of Selectmen, Monday, February 1st, 2021. This is a Zoom meeting, so any votes that we take will be done by roll call. Can I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Is there anybody that would like to address the board on anything not on the agenda tonight?
I see Steve Hilton has his hand up.
I'm just getting a blank screen from him.
Yeah, we are too.
And his.
His hands gone down. Steven, would you like to speak?
He's muted. No, I just, he's good, okay. So we'll go right into the town administrators update.
Gentlemen, thank you. So COVID has declined decent from a couple of weeks ago where we were doing 50 a week to just at 20 a week and now under 20 a week. So we're moving in the right direction, which is good. Hope that trend continues. We're still close to the public and we still have a spending freeze on. We're currently working on a capital plan and a budget which will follow. And I know the town, special town meeting warrant articles are on there. We'll talk about those in a little bit. And that's pretty much for the administrators update from two weeks ago.
Okay, then that's going to take us right into the special town meeting articles.
So I've done the articles. I have 12 of them. Most of them are transfers from free cash. So free cash starts at 1.2 million. And then I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8 articles here. And there's one old article from 2019 that needs to come off that number. So the total of all those is $800,000, leaving us with free cash of $375,000 going forward. So I'd be looking for approval of the 12 articles that I have submitted for the special town meeting warrant, which would be on Monday, the 22nd of February, at JR Briggs Elementary School Cafeteria at 7 o'clock. And I believe we'll have the meeting before that for the caucus, the caucus, thank you, Bill, the caucus before that at 6:30. So I figured we have to have a caucus. I may as well have a special town meeting right after and kind of do them both at the same time.
That could be one of the biggest turnouts at the caucus that we've had. Looking at this warrant as all money articles, is this going to be the complete warrant for this meeting?
That is correct.
Okay.
There's one article, the last one, number 12, it's a land donation. So that has no effect on free cash. Number 11 doesn't have any effect on free cash. Number 5 does not have an effect on free cash. And number 1 does not have an effect on free cash.
Brian, can I ask you a question? The 1.2 million, I thought that there was an accounting correction that we had to make that reduced that number from 1.2 million, increased stabilization, but decreased free cash.
Right, that's the article I mentioned from 2019. It was a $90,000 book entry that was missed in 2019 to 20. So that's $90,000 of that 800.
And that's on here?
That does not have to be on there because it's already passed that special town meeting. It was the 7th of May, 2019, Article 13, and that was passed. It just wasn't booked.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any more questions on this warrant?
Leo, I just have a procedural question.
Okay.
Seeing that we're not showing our screen of what these articles are, should we take the time to walk through each one of these and just let the public know what they are?
I'm trying to think how we've done it in the past. I think we've just pretty much voted on them as they were presented. And then they'll end up going right up on the website so that the public will be able to have a chance to read them over before the meeting.
And the constable will also post them in public places?
Yeah, that's mandatory with the warrant.
No, I understand that. I just didn't know because we were doing it on Zoom, but that's fine. I'm okay with it.
In the past, some we've discussed individually, like when it became budget issues and stuff. But I think these coming all out of free cash, there's really not a whole lot to go over. I do have, it might stump you on this one, Brian, but normally we open the warrant and we close the warrant. There's a time window. Mary, do you remember what that is?
Yeah, I believe we had done that on the previous meeting before we had to cancel. And that was through department heads and citizens petitions, which we received, none other than ones that Brian has already put in.
Okay. Then I guess we can vote tonight to accept this warrant as it's written and we can get it posted.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I think at one point, Brian, we had Debbie working on two additional warrants. I mean, you might be moving them to annual town meeting, but it was the one that Leo suggested that we change Board of Selectmen to, what was it, Leo?
Select Board. Select Board.
Right. And then the other one was, oh, rescinding the two previous town meeting votes on Winchester Park for a private organization to build a tennis court and hockey rink.
Sure. So it was sent to Deb Phillips a week ago. She got back to me this morning regarding those. The one regarding select board, it also has to have a zoning bylaw change with that. So I didn't see the sense of putting it on now to deal with it again at another annual town meeting regarding a bylaw change. So I'm going to put those on together at the annual town meeting because otherwise we're going to bring it up now. And then we're going to bring it up the same issue again later on. I figured best to do them both together and she agreed with that. So those were, that was pulled. And I pulled the Winchester Park one this morning. Deb sent some response on that. And there was more that needs to go into that. So I pulled that also to put on the annual town meeting.
Okay. One other one I had, and this was on Article 11, the transfer of funds from economic development to advisory board reserve. So that, that money was, which was originally $100,000, was allocated for economic development purposes. That was the plan with about $50,000 allocated for the planner, which we acknowledge in the warrant article. And I appreciate that. But my, my concern is, is that since the town voted on this money to be used for economic development, is there any mechanism that we can assure that the funds going forward, once they're in the advisory board reserve fund, will be used for economic development purposes? Or does that matter? It's voted on previously.
Sure. So my thought was put it in the advisory board for right now. If we have a use for it between now and the end of the fiscal year, let's reallocate it through advisory board for that purpose. If not, it would roll into free cash next year and not allocate out of free cash to any need that is requiring it for any type of development.
Because as you know, there are, there are expenditures that are being recommended by the Economic Development Commission now. There's, I mean, we have on the agenda an ad. I know that they're working on welcome signs for the town. So there will be other expenses. I just wanted to, you know, make sure that they're working under the assumption that that money is available to them.
Well, my understanding is in order to spend that money from Deb Phillips, it has to go to town meeting as changed. So therefore, any of that money would have to go to town meeting. So I thought it would be easier to put it in advisory. If there's an expense, they can ask advisory for it. And we can get advisory in the Board of Selectmen to move the money.
Yeah, no, that's, I understand that part. I just want to make sure that, what if advisory says, no, you can't have the money for the signs?
Which they can do.
Yeah.
That's great. And then you wouldn't be able to, and you'd have to find another one. Or you could go to town meeting and have the town reallocating more free cash to it. I mean, right now they'd have to go to town meeting anyways to allocate those funds. That's my understanding.
What are the parameters for, oh, Bill, the term, the, the fund that you didn't used to like? The terms.
Excuse me? Or revolving funds, yeah.
Yes. What would it take to set that up? And are we talking with too much of an amount of money in order to set up one of those funds?
You know, if you want to look at that, you know, you can pull that article off the warrant and we can deal with it at the annual town meeting. I'm fine with that.
Well, between now and the town meeting, I don't have a problem with putting it into the advisory board. But I think moving forward, we should establish a fund since that money was initially set aside for economic development purposes. And it's just a matter of finding the legal procedure to make it workable. Since we found that what we thought was workable has proven to not be legally workable.
Is a revolving fund even an option, Brian? Because don't you have to have money coming in and money going out?
Normally, that's how revolving fund works. So if you put in an economic revolving fund, you would spend it on something that's either gonna, you know, if you loaned out the money through economic development and they paid the money back, there's your revolving fund account. I'm not sure how that would work. I don't know where they would plan on spending the money where it would be a revolving account.
So they have one now for the BANNER program.
Right.
But that's money coming in and going out.
I might be remembering wrong, but I thought there was some clause in a revolving fund that when it hit a certain dollar value, that money had to go into free cash. And I might have that all wrong, but it seemed to me there was some kind of a cap.
There are some that have caps on them. I know some through recreation departments and whatnot had caps on them. And they could only spend to a certain threshold. Anything above that would go into the general fund through free cash.
That's what I'm thinking. So maybe, maybe when you have the opportunity, you could research, research that.
Sure. So I guess my, you know, do you want me to research it and do it at any annual town meeting? Leave this one and we'll transfer it from advisory to a revolving fund or whatever it means? Or how do you want to handle that? I'm okay either way.
Well, I think right now we should put it in advisory so it's accessible. But, but then going forward after the annual town meeting, make a change so then that money stays allocated for its original purpose.
Sure.
I just want to make sure too that the, you know, I don't know how Brian, you know, I do know how Brian feels. I can't say I don't know. But, you know, having a planner going forward is going to be critical for Ashburnham. And maybe we can't afford it right now. But if the money is set aside and it was originally set aside for that purpose, that makes it a little easier for us to be able to at least get out of the gate. But, you know, that's just my opinion.
Well, I've always had feelings on the planner thing that it, with this amount of money we're dealing with, it should have been done on a consulting basis because there's nowhere near enough money to hire somebody full-time and have it sustainable moving forward.
Sure. Or share a resource, something of that nature. If someone around has a part-time or available, you know, share a resource.
Exactly. But with the money that we have in that kitty, I mean, it's, you can only go to the well so many times.
Maybe paid for two years of a planner. I don't know how much planners are paid, but let's say it's 25K a year for a consultant. That's two years of planning services.
No, and, and I agree with that. But to hire up, I have this thing about hiring employees and then having to lay them off and paying 100% of their layoff fee for nine months while they're sitting home. I really have a hard time with that.
Yeah, I mean, I know we share a, you know, with Albertson and Westminster, we share the Veterans Agent. You know, maybe there's somewhere around there that we could share, you know, somebody that has one already. I'm more than happy to look into that.
Okay. And then there's also Winchton in too, which is next to us.
Exactly. I would have called them, but Keith is, he's, he left last week. So they have an interim coming in and then somebody after that. But more than happy to look at Winchton first.
Okay.
Yeah, they had previously had a part, well, I don't know if they're part-time, but a couple of years back, we had the opportunity to share the planner with Winchton.
So Leo, a couple of things. I've been thumbing through books here. So I'm fundamentally, fundamentally not opposed to moving the money into advisory. But I think it needs to, we need, we need to be looking at this as a, as a multi-step process. You know, back when I originally put this thing together to get the free cash, the $50,000 was not there for the intent to fund that planner position for an extended period of time. It was some seed money to start it up with the intention that it would be absorbed in the budget. You know, in the following year or two years after that, we certainly had talked about the prospects of regionalization. We saw that as an excellent opportunity to partner with a neighboring community to try to make that happen. Because we're kind of right in the middle of, you know, do we need to have a full-time? Do we need to have a part-time? Do we need to have one? But it's definitely something that we've needed to have. Well, we used to have one and then we got rid of them. So we need to take a hard look at how we can try to get that back in the budget in some way, shape or form. As far as transferring the money into advisory, there's one, one thing that I'm concerned about. And that's the, the specific language that's tied into that reserve fund. And I just pulled up, pulled out a copy of the Association of Town Finance Committees handbook. And I'm going to, if you'll allow me, I'm going to just read a section to it here.
A catastrophic, an unforeseen event?
Yeah, extraordinary and unforeseen expenditures is, are the, are the key words to use there. So I don't think there's an advisory board police, but I just think we need to be cautious about, you know, as we spend money out of there, because it's, we're going to be right on the edge, I think, of skirting what the intent of that is. But I, I agree with, with Rosemary was saying that we need to put something together for a funding mechanism for economic development. We don't want to blow that whole thing up. So we may have to take this step so we can make it accessible because we are going to have some expenditures. And I think the advisory board will understand the situation that we're in and work with us on that. And I think if Brian can look at other, other ways to set it up, I don't, I don't know if it's a revolving account or if there's some other fund that we can do. Because I, one of the things I'd like to see with some of that money is would be to set it aside for like a matching grant fund program. So that when we get these applications that we could potentially apply for, where we need some seed money to match it, that would be someplace for us to go to draw those funds from, which historically has been a problem for us.
I mean, we already have coming out of that.
What was that again?
We already have coming out of that money now.
That's right. No, I, I agree with your point, Bill. That was the point I was trying to make. As far as temporarily being in the, in the reserve fund, the only one that's going to go and ask for money out of that fund is Brian. So we don't have to worry about that money disappearing. And it's just kind of to get the advisory board to, to be understanding what we're trying to do. And obviously, we wouldn't ask for the money that, that they basically have the authority over. We'd only be asking them for the, the amount that we put in. So.
Or remember, Leo, it's, it's, it's a short-term fix because whatever money's not expended in that account is going to roll into free cash. You know, so when we go through the end of the year, and again, I'm not worried about Brian doing that. But we just need to know that we can't use that money to, you know, fund another account or to square something away there. And then when it does roll over to free cash, we, we need to be able, well, again, when it does, we're going to have to wait a period of time before you can get at it into the fall because it'll be, it'll be tied up in free cash analysis. But we have to have something to do with it. And we need to, I think we need to identify how much of that money we're going to make available for the economic development.
To skirt around what you just said, we could have a brief special town meeting within the annual town meeting to slide some of that money back over.
Yeah, no, there's, there's a lot of mechanisms that I think we have available for us to do that. Again, just, we're, we're on the same page with this. I'm not worried about it. But just as the conversation comes up, we just need to figure out what the best course of action is to get it set up, get it set up right the first time and not have to redo it again.
Exactly.
If I might just make one last, well, hopefully one last comment. There's still $375,000 in free cash. Knowing this money, if it's not used when we get close to the annual town meeting, knowing it's going to roll into free cash, I'd be willing to probably look at the 375,000 sitting there if we don't need it for revenue shortfalls and reallocate the money from free cash, knowing this money's going to roll back into that in the following fiscal year.
So it would all equal out?
Correct.
But that would be a town meeting vote?
That's correct.
So what if we didn't get a vote of support for that to go into economic development? And we did in the past.
You need to vote from advisory right now. You know what I mean? So you're going to need a vote from one area or the other. I'm just, it's another option, another avenue we could explore.
I just, I'm concerned that people are saying, hey, we already gave $100,000 to economic development. Now you're coming back and you're asking for more. That's what they're going to hear. Okay? We know what's really happening. But, you know, it's no different than the tax rate conversation, right?
Yeah. Well, I, I think that's a great point, but I, I think it'll be incumbent upon us. And certainly at the last annual town meeting, I know Rosemary, you did a couple of PowerPoint presentations. I think if that's the group of people we have to deal with because that's, that's where the vote is. We just need to make sure we do a similar good job explaining to them how do we got to that point? And we're really not asking for additional revenues. It's, it's, we're just reallocating it because it wasn't set up properly the first time.
I think they'd be understanding of that, that we're upfront with them that there was a glitch in how it was set up.
So I hate to, I hate to be a pest on this, but things just keep popping into my head here. So and it's more, I guess, logistical pieces than anything else. The funding of the police cruiser. In the explanation piece, Brian, I think it's important that we, or maybe we can do it at the day of town meeting. Now I'm talking myself out of it, that we tell the people what it is we're replacing, how old the vehicle is, how many miles are on it? You know, that kind of stuff. So I guess we could just do that in the explanation at town meeting as opposed to putting it on the warrant.
Agreed. And that's all going to come up. It's going to have to go to capital and advisory. I mean, there's going to be several meetings before we even get to the special town meeting. And that'll all come up, I'm sure, in those meetings also.
All right, I'm going to be quiet. Thank you. Actually, maybe I won't be quiet. So Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the special town meeting warrant, warrant article of February 22nd, 2021, as presented by the town administrator.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Now, we've already voted, but to go to what you had said, Bill, on the explanation, that normally goes into the briefing book.
Correct. Yep. We'll have time to work on that, a little bit of time anyway. Somebody will.
I will need signatures on that so the constable can post the warrant.
And what's the timeframe, Mary? When does it have to?
14 days prior to, so like no later than Thursday. For Wednesday, if possible. Larry's available the other day, but just to give herself a little buffer.
Okay.
All right. Are we going to be open tomorrow or we don't know yet?
Tomorrow doesn't look good. Wednesday should be fine. Steve Nims, I'm relying on him to get an update at 8 o'clock tonight from the source. He gets an update, I think, one in the afternoon and 8 o'clock at night. So we'll see what he says at 8 o'clock, but it doesn't look good for tomorrow morning.
Truck just went by my house. They're out there.
It is on my desk if anybody wants to sneak in and sign it.
Okay. Now we're on to the pending grant update. Rosemary, what's that one that the email came, did I understand it right? It came to economic development?
Oh, that's the LRRP. So we did find out this weekend that we, we're going to receive technical insistence from the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative for local rapid recovery planning. So this would be assisting local businesses as they recover from the pandemic. So this is a grant that they'll be kicking off, you know, I would hope this month. And it'll be ending by June 30th. There's no match, no reimbursement. So this is, yeah, they said it's a five-month period starting in late February, ending. They might allow it to extend beyond June 30th. So, yeah, so that was a nice thing. This is something economic development is doing.
Okay.
And I want to thank Kirby Lacy, the chair, for preparing that application.
Excellent. Now we go to shared winter street update. Do we have any updates on that tonight?
We do. So we, as we speak, spoken previously, our first round application, we did not make the cut. And I was under the impression that we would not be able to resubmit the same project in round two. You're allowed two bites at the apple here. So I reached out to the Department of Transportation and got some feedback back from them about why our application was not successful. So one of the things indicated in there was that we could reapply with that same application. So what I decided to do was, was to fix some of the things that they had pointed out as weaknesses in our application. And I redid the application. In addition to that, I put in about $54,000 worth of lighting that we were trying to get included in the Complete Streets project. So there's, as I think I'd spoken to you, I'd spoken to Mark Carlisle at Ashburnham Municipal Light. And we're back and forth about if that's going to happen or not. So when you add in the $54,000 of potential lighting with the original application, we applied for $242,790.91 worth of project work. And, you know, we'll know by February 26th, maybe even sooner than that, if we were successful. Now, I will tell you, the odds are long, but you lose 100% of the grants you don't apply for. So we definitely applied for this and who knows, maybe we'll get lucky.
Excellent. And I agree, if you don't apply, you know what the answer is right off the top. Now we go on to the UPWP submission. Do we have anything on that?
Do you want to speak about that? Or you want me to kick that off, Brian?
You can kick it off and.
So at the MPO meeting last week, they talked about, I think it was last week, I'm losing track of time. There's a Mass DOT studies can be funded through MRPC. So this is a program that does not cost us any money. And Ashburnham has not applied to participate in the unified planning, I can't remember the acronym, for well over five years, which actually makes it more likely that if we are to apply, we would get the study. We'd be recommended to have a study done by MRPC. So I reached out to the coordinator for that and MRPC's Sherri Bean, and we had a very nice discussion. There were like four or five different subject matters that they're interested in accepting studies on. And one of them was a corridor analysis, which she suggested might be something that Ashburnham wants to look at because it could incorporate several things that, you know, are, are issues in Ashburnham. you know, are, are issues in Ashburnham. So her suggestion was a corridor analysis extending from Corey Hill in Lashua to, um, uh, where was it? River Sticks? I think it is. Yep. And, uh, so it's really the, the downtown historic district. And, uh, what they would be looking at is, um, a lot of different things. They'd be looking at the two intersections of 101 and Route 12. They would be looking at, uh, the level of freight that's going through downtown. They would be looking at, uh, just the configuration of the road, uh, you know, traffic calming. Uh, they might make some recommendations on, um, you know, different things that we could do to, um, you know, improve the infrastructure of downtown. Um, so that was one that, um, they already have communities who have, who've already, um, expressed interest for, for these types of studies. And, and there really wasn't anyone who did a corridor analysis. So, um, we would be, if, if we were, be worked to be selected, um, you know, corridor analysis, we, you know, would be up our chances of, of being chosen. So, um, I then handed it off to Brian and he can take it from here.
We sent that in, um, they're looking for a lot of recommendation from the board of selectmen to support the, uh, corridor analysis on Route 12. You know, I, Mike is curious what they'll come up with, because now, you know, I look at everything pre-COVID, post-COVID, you know, where, where are we heading? You know, how, how have things changed? So, um, I think analysis of that area, um, is a good thing.
So the recommendation from the board of selectmen is essentially no different than what we do for the D L T A. It's like two sentences and Leo's signature. So it's, uh, not a big deal. Believe they're meeting tomorrow, but with the snowstorm, maybe they won't. Uh, so that would be their first look at, um, what the projects, uh, what projects communities have submitted for.
So that's not going to put us behind an eight ball or missing a deadline or anything?
No, we've already, Brian's already sent the email to MRPC saying that we're expressing interest to have that done. That was something she recommended that we do. So at least we're on the radar. I told her that we were not having a board of selectmen meeting until tonight. And that, uh, we would have to, you know, have a vote to move forward with this application. Uh, and, and then obviously write the letter of support. So we didn't want to act, you know, in a vacuum.
So if, if we decide to do this tonight, uh, couldn't we bang out a quick letter with an electronic signature and get it over to them tomorrow? So that if they do happen to meet, then they'll at least have our intentions on file.
Yep. Uh, well, I, you know, I don't know if Leo has the capability of an electronic signature. I believe I, I already have a letter written. It's really easy. So I think I already have it. So I can send it out tonight and, uh, yeah, cause all I, all you have to really do is change the subject matter from D L T to U P W P and you've got it covered.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I give you a motion if you're willing to accept it. I'd move that the, uh, board of selectmen, um, approve, um, a grant application to the Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for a unified planning work program, U P W P, uh, corner, corridor analysis survey.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemarie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
All right. Now we'll be on to the Mass Trails Grant Update.
Yep. So I submitted that today. Um, so that's in, um, and now we wait, we won't hear back probably until June. Uh, but I did want to, uh, point out publicly that I wasn't the only one who, uh, worked on this grant. I got, uh, assistance from Lorraine De Souza, Marshall Dennis, Dick O'Brien, and Jack McCarthy, who all provided information and helped me, uh, file, uh, the application. We also got 11 letters of support from community stakeholders, including the City of Gardner, the Town of Winchenden, and MRPC. So, um, yeah. So I, we now sit and wait, but I'm glad it's done.
Are those like the letter that, that I signed that went to Gardner?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So we got letters from Open Space and Recreation, Economic Development, um, uh, Conservation Commission, uh, North County Land Trust, Mount Grace Land Trust, Ashburnham Land Trust. And I'm probably forgetting some other people, but, uh, yeah, it takes a village to put these things together. That's why we need a planner.
Okay. Next one is the D L T A second round application.
Yep. Okay. So I'll talk about that one too. All right. So there is a second round. Okay. We've applied for the first one, which is the land use chapter of the master plan, but we can also apply for a second one. Um, and we then in that letter, we prioritize which one we think is the one that we really want. And sometimes if we're lucky, depending on how many people apply, we could potentially get two, which is what we got last year. We got the, uh, housing chapter of the master plan and, uh, a wetlands protection bylaw. Looked at by MRPC. Um, I was hoping Roger would be on this meeting tonight, but the last correspondence I received for him was he wanted input, but he believed that this one needed to be COVID related. And I don't know what that means.
Okay.
So I, you know, I don't think, you know, unless we talk to Roger, I don't really know how to move forward with that one.
So we still have plenty of time?
You know, I really don't know. Um, I guess I could look it up.
Or time between now and our next meeting?
Well, that might be the problem. Um, I mean, we could, don't forget, this is something that planning applies for. So, you know, maybe planning has something. I don't know. Yeah, I can't find it easily, unfortunately.
What if we, um, made a general motion in support of a round two application for the D L T A grant? Um, and we would go with whatever planning wants to do.
Now, I got an email on January 30th from Roger that an application was submitted. Would that be the first round, Rosemarie, or?
Yep. So that was the housing chapter of the master plan. No, the land use chapter of the master plan, excuse me.
Okay. Yep. That's what it says. And that was one that I had signed a letter of support also.
Yes, correct. So the only thing that we would need to do, um, you know, since planning does the submittal, is again, provide a similar letter. Whenever planning votes to, um, move forward with a round two, if they even have a round two.
Okay. I'm making a note for myself to check with Roger.
I mean, I like, you know, I like Bill's idea.
Yeah, particularly seeing that we're not actually doing the application.
Yep.
So I think if, um, again, it works for me if we just have a general motion about that. And then when you talk to Roger and find out specifically what it is, then you can, you know, put the letter. They have the specific thing on there, um, in support of that.
Okay.
So I would give you a motion that the board of selectmen support a round two D L T application, um, that the planning board is going to submit.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemarie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
All right. Now we go to the MVP update. And we've got to discuss the core team and when the first meeting will be.
As we discussed that at the last meeting, the core team, I think this is just an update of the core team and stuff. We discussed that at the last.
Okay.
So we had the kickoff meeting on, uh, Friday, the 29th. Marshall Dennis is the project manager for the town. Um, there's five members on it. Police, fire, TA, Marshall and DPW. And, uh, the state was at the meeting, which was good, and Power was at the meeting. Uh, the electric company declined to be part of the core team, but will be at the meetings for input. Um, they just didn't, um, want to be on the core team for that. So the meeting went well. Um, there's been some communications, um, since then, obviously, um, going forward, but there's the timeline set up. The state seemed very happy with the timeline. Uh, Marshall seemed to be a good person to lead the group. So I appreciate his, um, stepping forward for that. And, um, for all the members that are on that, because there'll be, you know, a couple of days of four or five hour days in there, um, along with some subgroups, uh, to get done. But I think overall it was a very productive first kickoff meeting.
I'm glad to see Marshall on it where he had probably more concerns than anybody else involved. So I feel that's going to make things work out to the town's advantage.
I agree.
Anybody else have anything to add or question on this? Now we're going to go to the ideas for the community compact grant. And the agenda has Rosemarie's name, so we'll start off with you.
I'm not the grant person, aren't I?
You've kind of morphed into that.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, you know, the community compact grant, uh, is a program that we participated on in the past. And we, uh, it was announced on January 15th that it was open. Uh, the applications are being, uh, accepted on a rolling basis. And if we're interested in applying, we apply for what they call best practices. So we select a best practice from a list that they provide. And then they, uh, have consulting services, uh, make recommendations to the town on how best we can achieve those best practices. So we can apply for up to two best practices. Um, so I sent out, um, you know, the link to the best practices. So, um, does anybody have any recommendations as to what we should apply for? And I, I think as we're looking at this, we need to keep in mind that, you know, we have the mass development grant rolling. Uh, they're going to be making some recommendations on bylaw changes specific to downtown, but only downtown. And as Brian pointed out, we have the MVP program rolling. And at the end of MVP on June 30th, there will be things that they'll be making recommendations about as well. So as you are looking at the information, um, it's like, let's maybe earmark something that isn't going to be included in MVP or the real estate technical assistance, uh, grant. So does anyone have thoughts?
Uh, I have thoughts.
Okay.
And I'm willing to share them. So, um, obviously heading up the zoning bylaw review, um, my new passion in life is zoning. So, um, I, I know one of the important things on there is a mixed use developments. It's been talked about previously. So there's, uh, one under housing and urban, urban, yeah, housing and economic development. Adopt zoning for mixed use development, including transit oriented development where appropriate, that part of it wouldn't be appropriate for us, but, you know, right now, currently in our bylaws, you can't build a townhouse, you can't build a condominium. You know, those are things that we need to look at. So that, that had some interest for me. Uh, I also was interested in the, um, best practice on, again, under housing and economic development, align land use regulations, especially zoning, capital investments and other municipal actions, but housing develop, development, economic development, master land use priority and other plans for future growth, um, which also promotes development or reuse of previously developed sites. So those were two things that, that stuck out in my mind.
I'm having trouble finding it now, but I had kind of the list that we received, the first two or three that were on it were the ones that appealed to me. But some of that could change on with what Rosemarie said about if the MVP has different recommendations, I would be willing to go along with those too. I guess the biggest thing I'd like to see is I know, Bill, you did a lot of studying on past studies that the town has when you were doing economic development. I'd like to see us choose things that, that are attainable. You know, it's nice to apply for a grant, have a study done, and they make all these recommendations. And it's so costly, they sit on a shelf and nothing ever gets done. So I'd, I'd like to see us go for things that, when the recommendations come, we can do them.
Well, Leo, if I could, so I don't disagree with what you're saying there. Uh, again, my own personal opinion, you know, when you look back at a lot of those studies and things that were done, again, to, to support Rose Bree's position in my earlier position, we had a town planner when a lot of those things were done. And that's how a lot of that got done. And then we got rid of the town planner.
We didn't so much get rid of him. He left on his own. And that was during the time when the finances were kind of tight. So the position just never got replaced.
Yeah. Uh, we had one hand that is back and holding the door open for him. So, you know, as he was looked at as a reduction in force. Uh, so yeah, we could, we could argue that, but he's not here.
Right.
Hasn't been back. Um, so you need somebody that is going to spearhead these projects. Obviously there are financial considerations, but as we're finding out with so many of these grants that we're looking at, as we delve into them more and more, they're building blocks. And if you're doing A, B, and C, now you can apply for D, E, and F, you know, that have funding components that go along with them. So I don't think there's a lot of communities that are in great financial positions where they can just say, yeah, we're going to spend, you know, half a million dollars on something. They have to do the same thing we're going through. So I'm comfortable and confident that we've kind of changed the mindset that we're not going to allow these studies to languish on a shelf. We're going to keep pushing them forward to get the, the accomplishments done that need to get done. So I don't want to just take something because it's low hanging fruit. All the things that we're working on are connected in some way, shape or form. And I also think it's going to be interesting with different agencies looking at the same thing. What kind of, uh, diversification and ideas that we get back as to how we can possibly move it forward. So, um, I, I, again, I'm really optimistic about the whole thing. I, I could be comfortable supporting, supporting anything that the rest of the board wants to, um, so.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to the, um, you know, the fact that we have all these studies that we haven't used. And actually I've used them to apply for grants. So, uh, I submitted, uh, five, it was either five or six of the studies that we did on downtown, uh, for the, during the application process for the mass development grant. So, um, I believe that because we had done those studies, that that's what caused us to, to be awarded that grant. Another example, we talked about it tonight, was the UPWP. If we get that study for a quarter analysis, that is something that can be used uh, when, when and if we apply for any future, uh, DOT funded infrastructure grants, like another complete streets project or a mass works project. Um, so these are things like Bill said, you, you need them in order to make the next step. It's, it's no different than the rail trail feasibility study. We need the feasibility study. And then in order to move, uh, next step to, uh, expanding and.
next step to expanding and connecting to the north central pathway. If it's feasible. And even with that application, I included in that a 2007 25% design plan that the town expended money on for the existing rail trail from downtown Ashburnham to South Ashburnham. So these things do come in handy. It's, you know, yeah, they sit in a shelf for a while. And yeah, we didn't apply for grants for a number of years. But as Bill said, hey, we're plowing forward now. And we're pulling these studies out of our back pocket and where it looks like we've done our homework. And with that said, I'm going to give you my one, one additional recommendation. For community compact, and that would be the best practice under housing. A men zoning bylaws to allow for increased density and housing opportunities in a manner that is consistent with neighborhood character and supportive of aging in community. That is something that could help us become a housing choice initiative community. Which would score us higher on infrastructure grants, again, like mass works, for example. So that's how it works. You know how it goes, Leo.
Yep. I wasn't aware that some of those old studies that were sitting on the shelf gaining dust have been used. That's what I like to hear. I don't like to see stuff wasted.
Yeah, no, I used all of them. The creative economy, the downtown charrette. There was another marketing plan that we did for downtown. Like I said, I think there was probably like five or six of them that I pulled out. And submitted within mass development grant.
Excellent. Some of them I think too, Bill, were even before we had a planner.
Yeah, but there, there was a lot of them around the same timeframe. And, and again, you know, back in the economic development days. You know, the reason I went through and called all those things out is we were able to use portions of those. And some of the conversations that we had and some of the grants that we were unsuccessful in applying for. We used information there. It's, for me, it's interesting too, to see what they were saying back then about what should happen. And I've been amazed that some of the things that were talked about back then are still talked about now as possible solutions to some of the problems. I'll be curious to see if we get that other grant about what they say we should do with Memorial Drive. You know, and you know, there's a plan in there to put that back to two way. And changing, you know, putting turn lanes and things like that in there. So I'll be interested to see if those same recommendations come forward. You know, if we get these other things done.
When I was talking you see. Told me that you know, they remember doing a study back in 2004, 2005. Which resulted in a recommendation to redo the intersection at 101 and Route 12. So, yeah, we've done it before, but now, you know, maybe things have changed. But, but, you know, they'll be looking back on that when they're doing the corridor analysis and primarily because of what potentially could be done with the redevelopment of the DPW lot. Because if you remember in that one, that if you, if you remember back on that study, they had redirected Route 101 directly through the DPW lot. And then coming up Maple Street.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Well, they, they actually, there was a couple of plans in there. One of them also diverted it up chapel. And down that way and came across through Pleasant. There were two or three different ones. And, you know, I looked at that and I just started cringing a little bit when I thought about how narrow that road is and why would you want to do that? And, and even the one that routes it down through the DPW. You know, one, I, I grew up in a small town in Vermont and you know, the main thoroughfare used to go right through downtown. And then the state of Vermont put in what the time they called a bypass. And, you know, we, that community became a drive by community because everybody was on the four lane highway. And it killed downtown. So, you know, we have to be very cognizant of not letting something like that happen is much of a problem that traffic creates down there. It's the lifeblood. A lot of those businesses have. So we need to be very cautious about that.
I agree.
So Rosemary, question for you. So I see that, that one on the list here that I have. So that seems very similar to the one I talked about in housing and economic development. I know it is separate and distinct, but it seems to be similar where it would give us some you know, some zoning changes and looking at density. So do you think the one you talked about by amending the zoning laws before increased density would essentially do the same thing? Because that, that's a big thing for me. You know, when I think about townhouses and condominiums and, you know, green developments and things like that. You know, that could be the lifeblood for us going forward. So if we can get some, get that done with that, I'd be okay with that one.
Well, my, are you talking? I have a are you talking about the one that says mixed use development?
Well, the one that you talked about was the, the one from housing amend the zoning bylaws. And then I had looked at two. One was adopt zoning for mixed use development. You know, with a transit oriented developments were appropriate, but obviously we don't have, you know, mass transit that wouldn't be appropriate for us, but it still talks about mixed, mixed unit development, mixed use development.
Yeah. So mixed use development would be on.
Yeah, residential in, yeah.
Right. And that's very important. I mean, so it's almost, those are two different things. So increased density would be the condos, multifamilies, townhouses. But it could also include mixed use. I, I don't.
Well, that was one of the ones I referenced, but the other one was a best practice under housing and economic development that would align land use regulations. Especially zoning, capital investment and other municipal actions where housing development, economic development. Master land use priority and other plans for future growth. Promote and development of reuse of previously developed sites.
Yeah. And I do like that one. My only, I'm just, this is me talking out loud. We've got the mass development one, but of course that's just downtown. And we're doing the land, if we get the DLTA grant, they're going to be doing the land use chapter of the master plan. So would they, would that be something that would be an overlap or does it really matter?
Yeah, it could be, it could be redundant. Yeah.
But we haven't got, we haven't, you know, we haven't got the DLTA grants. We might not get it. So, you know, you know, that's why I said, I said, we should only really consider the mass, the grants we have mass development MVP.
Leo, do you have any preferences?
Yeah, mine was on that list. The, to amend the zoning bylaws to allow for the increased density and housing.
Okay.
That we talked about.
Then I'd be prepared to offer up a motion if you're interested.
Well, I, I'd like to ask Brian if he has any thoughts on some of the things that, because there are best practices that might, you know, be beneficial for him. Do you have any, Brian?
No, I'm all set.
What about the one that's regionalized shared services best practices? We talked about that tonight.
Yeah.
Regionalized services and share resources among municipalities for efficient and effective service delivery to residents and taxpayers. In this era of shrinking budgets, loss of seasonal employees to retirement and an increased need for service improvements.
Well, I mean, I've been here a year, you know, 10 months of it, but no, 11 months have been COVID related. So for me to see what other communities have for resources and, you know, which ones I want to try to partner up with, I haven't been doing much of that at this time.
Yeah. So is that something that you're interested in or?
The second round, I'm not interested going there on this round of these.
Okay. And then the other ones that I thought you might be interested in might be anything having to do with human resources. Or potentially maybe something under asset and infrastructure management.
I'm okay with those. Like I said, the, you know, thing on my list, obviously the bylaw changes and the updates of the bylaws and all that stuff. You know, we have some concerns coming through the building department regarding enforcement of some of the bylaws.
Okay. Well, that's all I had to, and I wanted to make sure that Brian weighed in.
Thank you.
Speak now or forever hold your peace. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd offer you a motion that the Board of Selectmen apply for a community compact grant under housing best practices to amend the zoning bylaws to allow for increased density and housing opportunities in a manner that is consistent with neighborhood character and supportive of aging and community.
And what about another one? Want to do two at the same time?
What would you like the second one to be?
I don't know. We could do the mixed use or do the land.
Let, let, if it's okay with Leo, let's do this one as the first one. I think, I think this is our priority.
Okay.
At least, at least in my opinion. So let's do this as our priority and then let's, we'll, we'll pick another one.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Johnson, yes.
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
So what's our second one? You applied for both at the same time.
The other one that interests me was align the land use regulations. Especially zoning and capital investments and other municipal actions. With housing development, economic development, masterly end use priority. Or other plans for future growth. And it also included promoting development and reuse of previous developed sites. That one kind of stood out to me as well as the one that we just voted on.
I think both of you like that. I, I'm not opposed to it at all.
Yeah, I can get on board with that. That was, that was one of my, one of my top two.
Yeah, either that one or, you know, I like the miss mixed use as well, but I think that the mixed use one could be included in the first one we just voted on. I, I could go with another one. Adopt a tree by law. No, that's a joke. I'll wait for MVP on that one.
I had a comment coming up.
All right. So in the interest of time, I will give you another motion to apply for the community compact grant. Under housing and economic development. The best practice that would align land use regulations. Especially zoning, capital investments and other municipal actions. With housing development, economic development. Master land use priority and or other plans for future use. And would also promote development and reuse of previously developed sites.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Johnson, yes.
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
All right. Now we move on to the Economic Development Commission to appoint a new member. And her name is Erica Klug.
Krug.
Rose Marie, you've met the lady?
Yes, it's Krug. Actually, I think it's Krug. It's K R U G. We appointed her to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. So, and she attended several of the economic development meetings and is interested in and becoming a member there. And she was recommended by the commission last week.
Bill, do you have anything?
No, I just, I'd make a motion that we appoint Erica Krug to the Economic Development.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Johnson, yes.
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
And now we move on to the ad for the summer guide that the economic development has had in the past. And there was an email that talked about possibly some changes to the ad.
Yeah. So they said they voted to recommend adjusting that ad. Adjusting the ad and put it in this year's guide for the consideration. So the adjustments, you know, they, they'd make the recommendations more in detail, right? But we don't have three bed and breakfasts anymore. We only have two. If you're looking at the ad. You know, we might want to take out those items. Might. And, and this is something for discussion. Not knowing what COVID is restrictions there might be over the summer. You know, do we want to include things like summer band concerts or the community day or open mic nags at the library? This is running in spring and summer. Or do we want to put a disclaimer on the bottom that says something like, you know, pending, you know, state COVID restrictions. I mean, no one can really guess as to what's going to really be happening in the summer. So there are some items on the current ad. That it might might be impacted by COVID.
I would like to see the disclaimer because when the band concert series got canceled last year. There was a lot of upset people. And I think the disclaimer would be good because if it was advertised that it was going to happen and then it didn't happen. Then we get people all over again, getting upset about it. But it is what it is. I mean, there's personal things that I've been holding on to tickets to go to a concert somewhere and it's on the third round of a date. So, I mean, it's, it's just, it's the life that we have to live right now.
Yeah. So this ad would cover April 1st through August 31st. And if you remember, it comes in a booklet, a Johnny Appleseed booklet. And that's available in different businesses, the library, town hall. It's also available at the Johnny Appleseed on tourist center on Route 2. So that's, that's where you pick up this, this booklet.
Now, when I was on economic development before, that's when this all came about. And then I was no longer on it. How has this worked out? Is there any way to gauge the success of having this ad? Has there been any feedback saying that people are seeing it?
Well, people have seen the booklets, you know, last year, I mean, last summer, summer, nothing was really happening. Businesses were closed down. You didn't see the booklet in the Johnny Appleseed Tourism Bureau was actually shut as well. They weren't open.
Okay.
So, you know, at least for the last year, we really don't have any measure, right? You know, but prior to that, you know, I, I personally don't know.
Okay.
$350 for the ad. That's another question. I mean, how do we access the money to pay the bill? But, but anyway, that's a question for Brian.
Yeah, well, it'll give them something to think about after the earlier discussion.
So yeah, I mean, in general, just in, you know, just to relay back what the, at the meeting, what they talked about. It was possibly taking out these items that, that might not happen, but there certainly are a lot of things that do happen like, you know, hiking on Mount Watanik and Mount Hunger and Jewel Hill, Russell Hill. You know, high, other hiking trails. We don't know whether or not the, the fine dining and the gifts and art stores and things like that will be open. Currently, you know, we have limited dining and Creative Connections isn't open. Don't know yet about the farmer's market. So there are a lot of things on here that we don't know if we're going to have. So the disclaimer, they discussed that as well. But a good point was brought by a couple of the members on the commission. That, you know, even if it's that, you know, even if it's disclaimer and we don't know whether or not we're going to go forward, and let's say it's canceled. At least when people see this, they'll know that there's a lot happening in Ashburnham during, you know, different times. So it's, it's basically selling what we have, not what's closed down because of COVID. You got to look at it as a positive and not as the negative of we're in the middle of pandemic.
So that's kind of where I am with it. I think it would be a mistake to eliminate all those things out of the advertisement. I support the advertisement. The Leo's question, it's really difficult to answer the question, has it been successful or not? But I know certainly all of our surrounding communities around us have been in that publication. I think it was a good move for us to get in that. Well, I'd like to leave everything in there. Obviously, you have to change that there's only two bed and breakfasts. I would also like somewhere in there to get our our web address in there. So maybe they would encourage people to check out our website and, and see if these things are going on or not going on. So I, I'm very supportive of leaving everything we can on there. And if we need to put a disclaimer in, that's fine too. But I think we're far better off to be optimistic that maybe some things are going to happen. And I'd rather have it out there than not have it out there.
Yeah, I'd rather, if the money's available and we can access the funds, you know, I'd rather have something than nothing.
So, a motion to authorize an expenditure of $350 towards the ad?
So moved.
Is it available?
We'll find funds for $350.
Can always take it out of the selectman's account.
Yeah, and put it back in once the, the other account gets squared away.
Right.
So.
I'll second that.
Actually, Bill seconded it. I made the motion.
You did? Okay.
Well, I, I said so moved, but if you want, I'll, I'll second. I don't care. It makes no difference to me.
Okay.
See, I threw you all off. I made a motion. All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemarie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Okay, now we come up to discussing the town administrator's review. I'm going to start off by saying, Brian, I had sent you a copy of the review form. You have that? You did get it?
I do have that. I haven't had a chance to fill it out, but I'll have it ready for the next meeting if you want to hold this for discussion then.
Well, I think tonight's discussion is basically to, to give you a timeline. So, is two weeks enough?
Yeah, I can get it for within, I'll have it done within two weeks.
Okay. Bill and Rosemarie, anything to add to that?
So, if he has it to us on the 16th, then it goes to us, right?
Yes.
And we have to fill out our individual reviews. And then we, one of us has to compile it.
Yep.
Would it be ready for the first meeting in March?
Well, let's see. I'm looking at a calendar here.
So we're meeting on the 16th. The next one would be the second, Mary?
Yep, I'm looking on my calendar too.
No, first, excuse me.
Yeah, mine first.
I would probably say the second meeting in March to give them time to, to have us board members do ours and then compile everything.
So 15th?
Yes.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Bill?
Good for me.
Okay. I don't even think it's anything we have to vote on with just basically we set the timeline just now. And that will bring us next to the bylaw review committee update.
So, we've, we've yet to schedule our first meeting. We have yet to hear from the Board of Health about a potential member. So I sent an email to Glenn Hathaway late this afternoon, encouraging him to get back to me in the next few days with who that member would be so that I can get the first meeting scheduled to move forward. I, I've done some preliminary research and put some information together. But I have not reached out to the other people on there and looked at getting that first meeting together. Now, I will tell you that if we don't hear from the Board of Health, I'm really not interested in chasing them. So either we put some other committee on there, we eliminate them and put our heads down and go.
One thing to add to that, I had brought it up a while back, and I think it fell through the cracks. Glenn had asked me if we as a board had an approximate time of what the time commitment was going to be for, for whoever got on. And I don't know if maybe that was a concern that they had, like if somebody volunteered, how long, is it going to take 18 months? Is it going to take two years? Is it going to be three nights a week? Do we have any answers to, to give somebody along those lines?
Well, um, I, having, and Mary's certainly here, she can correct me. But I know Glenn has spoken with Mary and her recommendation was that Glenn reach out to me, call me, reach out to me in some way, shape, or form. He said he would do that. That was at least a couple of weeks ago, if not longer. So in that email that I sent him today, I sent him a PDF of the document that we approved that kind of laid out all of that of when we'd like to, you know, when we need to report back the first time. And, you know, that it needs to be done by the annual town meeting in 2022. So it gives them a little bit more specificity there. But, you know, as one person on there, I don't know how long it's going to take. And I don't know how many meetings there are going to be and how frequently they're going to be. It's a collective decision that that group will make. There may be an opportunity for us to do a bunch of work on our own and come back. You know, maybe we don't have to meet as many times. So there's a lot of variables there. But it, it's a huge commitment. There's no question about that. And I know the Board of Health is busy with COVID. There's no question about that either. But at the same time, we just need to move forward. So if they're not, if they can't make the commitment, I get that. Do we want to put somebody else on there or do we just want to go with what we have?
So I guess you've answered my question that you gave him the best information you could give him to his question. I think I would, before I give an opinion on eliminating the position or seeking another committee, I would like to hear back from them, yes or no? And then we could move forward from there.
Yeah, my, my recommendation is, you know, hey, we, we already lost a month. That's the way I'm looking at it. And we are, we were trying to get some of this done for annual town meeting, and now it's February 1st. So, you know, even if you don't hear an answer back from them, I would just start meeting.
That makes sense. See, I, I just don't want to say, oh, okay, we'll move forward. We don't need them. And that gives them an easy out. Okay, then we won't go. So if, if they have somebody that wants to participate, great. But I, I like your idea, Rosemarie, to just start up and, and see if they get back to Bill after what he just sent them.
Yeah, and if they don't get back, then we revisit. And if we need to swap it up, we do.
If we need to add somebody from another committee, they can come in after some meetings have been held. I remember being on the, the charter study committee, which also studied some of the general bylaws. And there were people that, I don't want to say they came and went, but they couldn't make every meeting. And at that time, some of the meetings were both scheduled during the day and in the evening to accommodate all the members of that particular group. So it wasn't 100% attendance at every meeting, but we got through it and, and the job got done.
Well, I, I know we, we've, we have missed a month. But I am still committed to the original timeline that we put together as a board so that we, we will deliver on the timeline that we set.
Okay. Then, yes, you can just set a meeting and start and you know, somebody can get caught up to speed if that's what's needed. Does that work? That work for you?
Yeah, no, I, I welcome the input. I, it's all good. So we'll, we'll get that in first meeting scheduled and off we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now we go on to approval of the minutes from January 19th.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the acceptance of the minutes of Tuesday, January 19th, 2021.
I'll second that.
As written.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemarie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Now we move on to other business. We've had some other business recently, but I don't have any for this evening. Do either of you?
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
I, earlier today, I sent out an updated task list. And I knew it wasn't going to be on the agenda, but I just wanted to point out that I did change the format a little bit so that as we add things to it, it'll appear at the top of the list instead of at the bottom of the list. And I've broken it out so that there's a completed section as well. And all I would say is that if you have things that you'd like to add to the task list to get them over to me, and I will get it updated again and send it back. I did, you know, put a few changes, a few additions in there, like the, you know, the rail trail grant that had been applied for things like that. So I am constantly updating that. So that's, that's one thing there. The second thing I had was, I think in an earlier version of the agenda, we'd had something about a finalization of complete streets. So my, and I, obviously, I know it's not there now, but are we all set with that, Brian? Have we wrapped up that thing and it's going out the bid or do we have some things in the wind on that?
I think, Mary, they have still have, they're still coming back with something, correct?
Yeah, they were meeting with the light department late last week. So he wasn't going to be ready for this meeting, but he will be at the next meeting to present the second addendum bid with the specs that the light department gave to him.
All right, good.
And that was why it was dropped from the agenda.
And, and also, any changes to the Father Lacy Hall parking?
Correct. I think they spoke to Steve on that as well. I think they were just trying to finalize with the light department.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the last thing I had was going back to the last meeting, we had a presentation from John Mulhall from the website review committee. And I've had some time to think about that. And I got to tell you, I'm really, really uncomfortable with them coming back to us and saying that they're not going to be ready till April. That, that's, you know, we had expected to see that in early January. I know everybody's busy, but I would like to encourage the board to reach out to them and say, you got to do better than that, that we need it by March or there's some, some other time. But that's, you know, I talked to a couple of people on that committee and I don't know, I'm just not comfortable with that, having April as when they're going to get back to us. Because that, that thing is so important to us and it just seems like they're dragging their feet on that whole thing.
Yeah, there, there are a couple of things that like are really timely that need to get up there. I mean, I think it's important that we put up information about MVP up there as soon as possible because it's going to require that workshop. When people are invited to that workshop, whenever it's going to be, they're going to want to look for something and they'll probably go to the website. There's no information on there in the bylaw review committee. You know, I, we continue to get complaints about not being able to find information on the website. And it seems like forever that we're dragging this out. So, you know, I, I told John that as soon as possible, you know, the sooner the better. So I was hoping that he would, that they would get that to us before April 1st.
I am going to send him an email.
And just as a follow-up of that, Leo, and I'm, I'm looking for it here and on the task list, and I can't find it. But one of the things that was on here was tasking boards, commissions, and departments to go onto their pages and clean up some of the information that was in there and get whatever they needed to do into Donna to get some of those things out of there. And I would be curious to know if we've had any movement on any of that, Mary, or does anybody reach out to you with, with anything or to Donna that needs, that they've wanted cleaned up off their webpages?
I know Donna from a few of the boards and committees, but not a, a good majority of them. And I also know that the website review committee sent out feedback to boards, committees, and commissions, and they heard back from very few. And I believe they sent them to other chairs because I provided the information to John Mulhouse of all the chair names of all the boards, committees, and commissions.
I, I had a couple of recommendations on the task list, just adding the grants that we're, we talked about tonight.
Okay.
You know, so that we keep track of them. You know, the UPWP, the Community Compact Grant. I mean, we get, I volunteered to apply for that. But Brian, I'm, I'm, I don't have the passwords or something to get in. So it's a DLS thing. We'll have to talk about that. I did see on here, it just was a reminder, do we have any update about the Brezner Hand Center? Renegotiation of the lease?
Our building commissioner, our new building commissioner, Sarah Colkin, was over there last week. I spoke to her today about what's going on. So I asked her, I just want an update with what's going on over there. So when I approached them regarding the lease, I kind of know where they're coming from. So there, AJ has been very forthcoming with dealing with us. So I'm just kind of waiting for the building stuff to kind of get resolved and then I'll head over and start working on that.
Yeah, I, I, you know, hey, it's really hard for people to just sort of be in limbo like that. And it's not fair to, to the Brezner Hand Center as well.
Exactly. If it wasn't for COVID, I'd stop over there quite often. But, you know, I, I really can't get out and about right now. Not that that's an excuse, but I can contact him. But I'm just waiting for the building stuff to get through and then let that resolve itself and then follow up and see where they're coming from and where they're heading building-wise before I negotiate a lease.
The, the other thing I'd want to add on this, Bill, is the Route 101 South tip project. I just think we need to make sure that we know where we are on that. The, the project is estimated as over budget by DOT. And I do know that there will be conversations with DOT coming up next week, the week after as far as prioritizing what projects are moving forward. We need to stay on top of it. I don't want us to get pushed further out than fiscal '25. So we, you know, we just need to be keeping an eye on that one.
Mary, would you put down for the next agenda for the next meeting that we're going to do an in-depth going over the Board of Selectmen task list?
Okay.
Hey, Brian, any chance sometime over the next couple of weeks, you could kind of give us an update on that one-on-one tip, kind of where we are? You know, if we've got more engineering done or not done. I did see the information you sent over. It was later today, which was very good from Weston and Sampson. But I, I'm a little bit confused about where we are. So maybe if you could work on putting something together, I know I would appreciate that.
Sure, I can do that. I spoke to Steve morning about it, well, this afternoon about it. I can update you.
And I've got one to throw out at Brian. We're coming up on the time where you're going to have a budget to present to us for the annual town meeting. And I think, I forget exactly when it hits, but between February and March. Bill, do you remember when, when we've gone over that in the past?
Um, not specifically. I mean, usually around the first of the year. Um, not, not specifically, I mean, usually around the first of the year is when, you know, you start having the conversations and, uh, and I, I, I've spoken to Brian about this, so I'll, I'll let you go ahead.
So it's just for you to come to the board to one of our meetings and lay out your budget plans?
Sure. So I just finished the, um, template, um, I redo the template, uh, to a format that I'm more comfortable with. I'll be going over with my department, department heads, um, early next week with their recommendations. So I'm gonna send it to them this week, talk to them next week and have something for you, uh, for the fifteenth.
Okay. I just didn't want us to kinda put it off and then be scrambling at the last minute.
Well, it, on, on the task list, Leo, there's actually three or four items that are all interrelated there, whether it be the, you know, asset inventory, the capital plan, the, the budget, um, you know, that kinda stuff. And I, I spoke to Brian last week about the budget and, you know, he's not gonna tell you, but I will, that one of the things he's had to do is he's had to go in and completely rebuild that budget in an Excel spreadsheet format so that when he does get it to us, we're actually gonna be able to see a document that makes some sense where we can see the breakdowns of what's going on. A- as you all know, currently with the, with the software that we have, you know, it's like reading War and Peace to try to get a look at the budget to see what's going on. It's not, it's just not a manageable document. So, um, I know, um, and I know you both know this, that he's putting an inordinate amount of time in trying to recreate that when, you know, we should have a, a budget software that is user-friendly and unfortunately because of prior decisions that were made, we're not in that situation. So, uh, you know, then you throw COVID in and all the craziness that goes with that. So I'm sure he's, uh, pedaling as fast as he can on that.
Actually, COVID might make it easy. People aren't coming in and out of his office all the time.
I, I think you'd have a hard time getting to convince him of that.
Um, hey, I did find, uh, in the charter that the Board of Selectmen need to transmit a copy of the budget with their recommendations to the Advisory Board seventy-five days prior to annual town meeting. So I don't, I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, it kinda puts us in into where we should be going. And I think that's all gonna work with what Brian just said when he'll be ready to have that coming to us. So I think that's enough on that cuz we're gonna be covering it with more depth at the next meeting. Um, I tried to keep it off at tonight's cuz I knew we had a lot of grant discussion, which probably we'll have minimal discussion on grants at the next meeting. And I've been trying to just keep the agenda so that we don't have marathon nine o'clock or nine-thirty meetings. Uh, I think you guys probably don't have an objection to that. So now I believe we're gonna go on to reminders and you kinda got a few of those tonight, Bill, on the.
Yeah, I, I shuffled the deck here from what, what's on the agenda a little bit, but all the information is still in there. So the next Board of Selectmen's meeting will be on Tuesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at six-thirty PM. The annual town election is scheduled for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. And that'll be at the JR Briggs Elementary School. Well, obviously more information will follow as we get closer to that. Um, open positions for the elections. We have a selectmen's position, which is a, a one opening for a three-year position. The moderator's position, which is a one-year position. The Board of Health has two openings, which are both three-year positions. The Municipal Light, uh, Board has one opening, which is a three-year position. The Planning Board has two openings, um, each of which are five-year positions. And the Library Trustees have two openings, uh, each of which is three years, um, long, the both those positions. The Town Caucus, Town Caucus is scheduled for Monday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at six-thirty PM uh, at the JR Briggs Elementary School Cafeteria, Ninety-six Williams Road, Ashburnham, Mass. Um, it's always been in the upstairs of the library, but due to COVID restrictions, um, there's not enough space there to do that. Cafeteria Briggs will certainly provide us the space to do that. And, um, so just, we'll, and we'll keep bringing that up as well. Um, if you are not, not selected at the Town Caucus, nomination papers are available through the Town Clerk's Office or the town's website, which is, uh, www dot Ashburnham hyphen MA dot gov. Nomination papers must be submitted to the Town Clerk by close of business on Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one. The last day to withdraw or object nominee, or object to nomination papers is by close of business on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And any questions on the Town Caucus or the annual election, please reach out to the Town Clerk's Office at nine seven eight, eight two seven, four one zero zero, extension three. And as was discussed earlier tonight, the special town meeting uh, will be on Monday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. Um, again, new location, it will be at the JR Briggs Elementary School Cafeteria, Ninety-six Williams Road in Ashburnham, Mass. And historically, our meetings have all been up at Oakmont. But I'm glad to see that we're going to Briggs. I think it's gonna be a good environment for us. I think the parking's gonna be easier. And, um, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that's gonna be at seven PM. Uh, the caucus is gonna be just before it, correct?
So. That's my understanding.
We don't, I don't see a time, so.
It'll be six-thirty PM with the Town Caucus, followed by the town meeting at seven.
Okay.
I did read that in there, but yeah, it's six-thirty for the Town Caucus.
Rosemarie, are you gonna be on the, uh, ballot this year?
It depends on what happens at the Town Caucus.
Are you gonna be attending the Town Caucus?
I always attend the Town Caucus.
Okay. I'm trying to give you a shameless plug. Uh, we have one more. One more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemarie Meister, yes?
Bill Johnson, yes.
And Rosemarie, are you gonna be emailing me that letter to sign?
I am.
Okay.
I'll definitely send that.
Very good.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.